So, good evening, everybody. The June 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
I am here.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Dr. Selly?
Here.
And Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Please, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, I'd like to read the mission statement for the City Council. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We'll treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. If we could have the certification, please?
Sure. I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Good, thank you. So, in keeping what has kind of become our tradition now, we're going to have a proclamation for honoring the month that is actually being honored, and this month is a celebration of gay pride. And so, Maddie, I'm going to ask you if you could come up to the podium for a second. And Maddie, just to give you a little bit of background, so we've been doing this, reading the resolutions now, oh, gosh, it must be, I think, about six months or so, and to all of us, it helps all of us learn more about all of the people who've contributed to our community and understand different groups.
Yeah.
In, in a way of, now, you probably noticed this, that for Asian, it's celebration of Asian Month, they had a term that they called "turning the page on hate." And that just kind of made a whole lot of sense to us, that learning more, you know, at every, at every single meeting helps everybody turn the page on, on hate. And one of the things that we like most about this is that we learn from our youth, that all the time, it's a student that comes up and reads the proclamation, and you know, it's all of you, you, you're, you're our future, you, you are the ones that are going to turn this all around, so we're so, so proud of you, and we're so happy to have you participate, you know, in doing this. So Maddie, take just a minute or two and tell us a little bit about yourself before you read the proclamation.
Well, I'm Madison Call. I go to Long Branch High School and the School of Social Justice. I'm in, I'm about to be a senior next year, and I really like doing things such as art and, you know, working at my job, finagle, and just participating in the community.
And say one other thing, what are you saving for?
I'm part of the LGBTQ community.
Right, and then you told me one other thing, you're saving your money, and what are you saving your money for?
To travel the world.
Excellent, good luck with that. Maddie, start us off, and if you would, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the City of-
Pull the microphone just a little bit closer. There you go, okay.
Whereas, the City of Long Branch is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who identify as LGBTQ plus, and whereas, while our city, state, and nation have come a long way in our journey towards dignity, understanding, acceptance, inclusive, and mutual respect for all, we still have a long way to go in eradicating the prejudice and discrimination that LGBTQ plus people face every day, and whereas, LGBTQ plus people transcend across all races, nationalities, cultures, and ethnicities, and whereas, each year in June marks the anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion that gave birth to the modern movement to advance the rights of LGBTQ plus persons, and those committed to justice and equality celebrate during the month of June the notable achievements and outstanding service that LGBTQ plus Americans make to our society, state, and nation, and whereas, June has been recognized since 1970 by our, by our country, one year after the Stonewall Rebellion took place on June 28th, 1969, to commemorate the impact the movement has had on society, and 2022 marks the 53rd anniversary of Stonewall, an important milestone in the history of our country, and whereas, during the month of June throughout the nation, numerous organizations, governments, and others recognize the rights of LGBTQ plus persons during Pride celebrations throughout the whole world. Now, therefore, will be resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Long Branch, that the city proclaims June 20, June 2022 LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and encourages all people of the City of Long Branch to advance the cause of equality and inclusiveness for all LGBTQ plus people everywhere.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Maddie. All the best with those, with those big plans. You got it. And now, now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. Ordinance 1422, this is an ordinance authorizing the sale of city property not needed for public use located along the front of 279 Third Avenue known as Block 206, Lot 2 on the official tax map. This ordinance was introduced on June 8th, 2022, which authorizes the sale of municipal property adjacent to 7, 279 Third Avenue in Long Branch to Third Clinton LLC and Third Hudson LLC. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, you'll have five minutes and may only speak once.
Who made that remark? Who on the council just made that vulgarity about me just now?
I didn't hear anything.
You should be ashamed of yourselves, you talk about civility.
I didn't hear anything.
Requesting one-minute notification, Vincent Lepore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Going to be fact-checking Ordinance 1422 concerning city property Block 206, Lot 2, in front of 279 Third Avenue. If one superimposes a Google area photo over the city tax map concerning Block 206, Lot 2, city-owned property, it clearly shows that the Medical Arts Building has for years enroached on this section of land for its use, presumably avoiding taxes on it for decades. Descriptive language in the ordinance states, "The current developer owner of 279 Third Avenue is the only contiguous adjoining property owner for this sale." The ordinance reads, quote, "Whereas the City of Long Branch detained an appraisal and determined that $416,000 is a reasonable fair market value for the subject property," end quote. There is no taser attached to this ordinance for the people of this city to make a determination if the $416,000 is reasonable or not for 6,254 square feet of public property. The ordinance further reads, quote, "Whereas the buyer are endeavoring to renovate the existing six-story steel and masonry building on the adjacent property for residential purposes, and have determined that the subject property is necessary for said development," end quote. There is no plan attached to this ordinance or any statement as to what the intended use of this land is for. Nothing says how the developer plans to use it so as to justify a sale. Is the land going to be used for recess parking standards, as continued diagonal parking, or is the land going to be used for landscaping, or is the land going to be used for additional square footage for density to have more units? Nothing is really defined in the area between the building and the curb as to use. Furthermore, in addition to not having the set appraisal, it is quite dishonest of City Attorney Ray Noe not to provide the meets and bounds description to this ordinance. This is unheard of on a land sale ordinance, not to have the meets and bounds, and only further proves the incompetence of this Mayor and Council. The ordinance is unfit for a vote this evening. The matter is to be tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Council President, if you'd like, I can answer a few of these. First is a complete description of what the, the property is, there's not a meets and bounds description, it's an 18.4-foot by 340-foot strip along the front of the property, it goes along the, the right-of-way line, so, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward. There, of course, is a city appraisal, Mr. Lepore, if he would like to Oprah it tomorrow, he can certainly get a copy of it, we don't attach appraisals to these kind of ordinances. In all due respect, Mr. Lepore, you're done, and you're not answering-
My five minutes is not up, Ray Noe.
No, you're not, you're not-
My five minutes is not up. It is not up, the clerk did not call me on five minutes, I had two minutes left.
Well, then-
And you did not provide the meets and bounds for this ordinance.
If we're in the middle of your-
Legally obligated.
If you want me to answer these questions, I'll take your two minutes up now.
I don't need your answers, I stated the facts as fact-checking. You are negligent in not providing the meets and bounds.
And in all, in all due respect, Council President, you know, if Mr. Lepore wants to come up and ask questions or fact-check, then he better be prepared to have us have the answers, because we always have the answers. So, the answer is that the appraisal was for $416,000, we have it, if he wants to file an Oprah request, he can get it. The, the, this property was transferred to the city in, I think, in the, in the 50s, it doesn't appear to have any purpose. The plans, by the way, for this project are pending before the zoning board, so anybody who wanted to pay attention for even a minute could go to the planning board and see the complete plans for these, for this project as they are on file in the city. So, we wouldn't, we typically don't do that when, when we attach it, it's obviously, there's a zoning board application, I believe that, oh, I looked for Nick, but obviously, he's not here, it was, was going to be scheduled in February, but it was held pending this, this application, so.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ray Noe. This, I now need a motion to close the public portion, the, the public hearing on this ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
How you guys doing? I'm Manuel Jones, I grew up in the city. I don't want to get too aggressive, I mean, I guess that gentleman is a little upset with what's going on in the city, I maybe, I'm assuming that. A lot of people are in the city, I mean, I grew up here-
Excuse me, this is, this is a hearing on a specific ordinance, there's another public portion on general items later.
Okay, so I-
This is only on this one.
I wait, I thought he was-
You wait.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any more comments on this ordinance? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is the second reading of Ordinance 14-22 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Sale of City Property Not Needed for Public Use Located Along the Front of 279 Third Avenue Known as Block 206, Lot 2 on the Official Tax Map." I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. There are no ordinances for introduction, and so we're going to move to the public participation part of the meeting for resolutions and all general comments, but let me just, give me one, one more second. I need a motion to open the public portion, part of this meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record, you'll have five minutes and may only speak once.
Now you got it.
Yeah.
Emmanuel Jones, 149 Rockwell Avenue, Long Branch. Like I said, I grew up here, I guess the gentleman was upset he left, so, I mean, there has always been discussions with friends, people I grew up in the city with, that aren't, we don't disagree with what's going on, I mean, of course, change is needed, it has been needed in this city. We just feel like some, no matter race, color, creed, you go around this area, the beach, it seems like I was sitting up there yesterday, and it doesn't feel like it was when I was a kid, like we're not, we don't belong there. And then there's some things in the city, like areas, like I mentioned to this lady here, like Franklin Avenue, you have townhomes going up, it's kind of like historical character parts of the city that's just, in my opinion, that maybe should have been landmarked. I mean, of course, I'm a working man, so I can't come to these meetings every time, but those are discussions, like now you're going to go down Franklin Avenue, and you're going to see condos with historical homes that's been here for who knows how long. But that's just the arguments and the gripes you have with people from the city. Besides, lack of things for kids to do, I, in my opinion, when I was younger, there was a lot more stuff to do, we had open gym in the city, that's not, in, in, I haven't seen any of that going around, I used to coach youth kids when they, when they were younger, I just stepped back because I have my own son, I have to focus on, try to get him into college and move forward with himself. But it's just, you see, like, is the meetings always like this?
No.
I'm just asking, because a few weeks ago, people came because they were pissed off about what happened down at the beach, and I do Uber once in a while, and I had a gentleman in my car, and he specifically said, you know, "Why did they come down to the beach?" So, when he said that, I'm like, "What do you mean?" He said they didn't come down before, so his interpretation to me was that he felt that there was however many youth African-American kids from the city of Long Branch that came to, to the beach. And I said, you know, "That weren't, that wasn't kids, that was in Long Branch." The demographics of Long Branch has changed, I mean, I don't even know if there's 5,000 African-American kids in this city, but neither here or there, it's just, that's just gripes that people have, you know, you're going to get somebody aggressive like him, I can be aggressive, but I can also sit down with you guys in a bar and probably have a drink with you and, and tell you how I feel, you may not agree with it, I may not agree with you, though, but at the end of the day, I'll give you respect because that's how I was raised. There's a lot of things going on in the city that needs to change, I mean, like I said, there always needed to be change in the city, we got rid of a lot of crime in the city, buildings are getting built, but it seems like the city of Long Branch is being left out, it seems like the focus is just on the beach. Lower Broadway has been demolished for I don't know how long, and, I mean, I don't read the minutes, I don't read everything, when they're going to get, find a developer, I, I was told that a developer had backed out, so there, there's a lot of things that probably needs to go on, but, um, it's just, it, it feels like the city of Long Branch inside, there's no, it's just a loss of it, like, I live, I have a house in Long Branch, but I live in Neptune, and I hang out sometimes in Asbury, and I see that, that was, Asbury and Long Branch was kind of similar, there's, in, what, what they redevelop, you can go out there and you could feel like you don't have to be rich, and, and you don't have to be middle-class, and you can't hang out over there, and that's how Long Branch feels to me, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, there, there's a lot of other people who feel the same way, but I'm going to keep trying to come, continue coming to the meetings, and, um, Mr. Dangler knows me, I told him I'll be here this week, but, uh, there's a lot of angry people in the city, I mean, you, you, the, you can't be angry and, and just, I mean, I mean, if he really wanted to, he probably would have gotten a physical altercation, he was really upset, but, I mean, he must have been upset about a building, property that, what is it going to be? A lot of people complain that they think it's just condos everywhere, but that's just my opinion, I just wanted to say my piece, and hopefully, uh, we can move forward and, and get this community back to feeling like it was, like I said, I was 41, she may be older than me, I mean, there was, it didn't matter, it was white, black, some mixture of the Spanish, everybody always got along, I played sports with a mixture of all different cultures, it didn't matter, but it just doesn't seem the same in the city no more. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Manuel, thank, thank you for your comments, I don't know if anybody wants to make, make a comment?
I would like to make a, a comment. Yes, I'd like to make a, a comment in regards to the beach and the fact that the youth or the young millennials seem to take a hit in regards to the pop-up parties, but we've been clear that it had, really had nothing to do with our Long Branch youth, the young people of Long Branch, whether they're black, white, Hispanic, what, what have you, they were not the culprit, if you will, and it's been said, whenever the press, whomever calls, it's always been said that this, it's clear that it was Long Branch youth had nothing to do with what took place on the beach. So, I just want to make sure that, say it again publicly, that we, we, we understand we did take the hit, why we were the target, I, we, I don't know, but I do know that, again, the youth of Long Branch took, took the blame for it, and that should not have been, because it had nothing to do with the Long Branch youth. Thank you.
Emmanuel, I just wanted to comment also, you know, we have started again to have hours with council meetings, with the council members, and, you know, for that beer that you talked about, or however you, we can't quite do that, but we can meet here with you, I think it's the first Wednesday of the month, and, and if you let us know that you would like to, to chat with any one of us, you know, we can set up some time, because I, I think your, you know, your thoughts are important to be heard, and your involvement is, is important, so that, keep that in mind also, as a way that we can share information. Okay, and anybody else, any other comments?
No comments this time about me coming to the podium, huh? Requesting one-minute notification, Vincent Lepore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. From the public record to the public record, at the May 31st, 2022 Brookdale College Board of Trustees Meeting, prior correspondence was put on the public record, and the May 11th, 2022 Long Branch City Council Meeting was discussed on the matter of paid councilwoman Anita Vogt's conflict of interest and now suspected RICO violations involving a developer financial agreement ordinance that councilwoman Vogt voted on while maintaining a paid position as Vice President of Strategic Partnerships at Brookdale College. That financial agreement ordinance involving a 30-year optional 35-year tax abatement concerned the Broadway redevelopment project. A letter of public record was received by me from Dr. David Stout, representing the Board of Trustees of Brookdale. It read as follows for the public record. "Mr. Lepore, thank you for contacting me regarding your complaint about Anita Vogt. The college's legal team has reviewed your complaint, received on 5/17/22, and the video of your public comment at the 5/11/22 Long Branch City Council Meeting, in which you explained your concern. All accusations of violations of the college's code of conduct are taken seriously and reviewed thoroughly. While I understand you want to know if Dr. Vogt has been suspended, the college does not discuss confidential personnel matters publicly. Once again, thank you for referring your concern to me. Dr. David Stout, President." End quote. Subsequently, on June 20th, 2022, the New Jersey State Comptroller's Office stated the following on Councilwoman Anita Vogt matter, quote, "It is the office of the State Comptroller's policy to not give out status updates regarding investigations. We will contact you if we need additional information," end quote. Be assured, Anita Vogt, in addition to the State Comptroller's Office investigation, there are all those other active investigations taking place by the New Jersey State Attorney General's Office, the DCA Local Government Services, and others. You, Anita Vogt, are not getting away with it in furthering this city's decline into more junk government."
Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Are there any other comments? Okay, I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll now ask the clerk, were there any changes in the list to the resolutions?
No changes have been made.
Okay, we can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda, I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. For applications, I need a motion to appoint the following member of the Long Branch Fire Department, Pedro Sanchez, and the company is The West End Company, and the status is honorary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that doesn't need a-
Yeah, roll call.
It doesn't need a, roll call, roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. And now miscellaneous business for the good of the order, and Councilman Dangler, would you please start us off?
Just a couple of brief things, we don't, we don't meet again before the 4th of July, and of course, it will be a busy time, but we want everyone to have fun, enjoy the 4th, and be safe. And as Mr. Jones said, that Long Branch is a town of inclusion, and, um, so everyone is welcome, but just come here to make sure that everyone that is here is able to have fun and enjoy themselves as, as everyone is entitled to. The other thing, Mr. Jones, I know you said that, that you work, so I just want to re, reiterate that we do have council hours, so if it, if you can make the, the meeting into something you might need to discuss, a couple of us are, would be available, that they would, the clerk would give you the time, it's, it is after work, but the clerk would give you the, you know, the time, and, and a couple of us would be there, so do we would just want to know what it is, if it's something regarding the police, something regarding construction, whatever, have the particular department head there also, and we'd be more than willing to sit down and talk. Thank you, and all of you, again, be safe, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilman Dangler. Councilman Viera?
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Maddie for reading the resolution for LGBTQ, VTCQ, and plus, and Manuel, I heard you, and I, the best thing, you did tell a lot of truth on that thing, and, uh, the best thing about our city is the diversity that I always enjoyed, I moved in here since 1975, and the diversity, no matter where I went in town, it was the best thing, it was my favorite, and it still is, and I feel very strong for that, and I know how you feel, if you go into different sections of this town, we still have that, I know we lost it in some sections, but there's still that in some sections of the town, which I enjoy very much, and to those, a lot of those houses that you're saying that we lose, those Victorian homes and everything, we don't control the owners, they sell those houses, and we don't have the right to tell them what to do with their properties, you know what I mean? I do, my heart bleeds every time I see a house go down, but we have to follow the rules and regulations, and unless the city buys them our right to protect them, you know, we can't do that, you know what I mean? So, I, I know how you feel, and I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Viera. Councilwoman Selly?
In two weeks, the 4th of July is going to be here, it hardly seems possible. I would just ask that you be safe, have a great time, enjoy your visit with your family, and come back to us safely. The Director of Public Safety is here, and I personally would like to thank him for how safe I felt over the weekend, we had an awful lot of police presence, and it was needed, and it was good to see, I felt very secure. Thank you, Director. And now, I would like to say thank you to Anita, this is her last council meeting for this term, and I'd like to say thank you to you for carrying us through this last year, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Selly. Mayor Plon?
I'd just like to thank everyone for being here today and for your comments, I'd also like to wish everyone a happy 4th of July, a safe holiday, and, uh, Councilman Vogt, great job as Council President, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, so just a, a few comments myself, also thanks to Maddie, it's just so inspiring working with, working with our youth on, on that, on that little project that just speaks volumes, I think, and I want to- And I want to join Councilwoman Selly in recognizing the job that was done. Director, our Director Saldides, Director of Public Safety. It was the comments that I heard from folks just up and down the, the whole, the boardwalk. They felt secure. They appreciated the fact that there was so much security there. The officers were so personable and, and welcoming in so many ways. So a wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you so much to, to, to the whole team. I just, I want to bring your attention to just one other thing. You know, we passed so many resolutions, and they kind of, sometimes they, they get lost, and there are some really wonderful things that, that, that happen. And so I just want to bring to your attention one of the resolutions that we passed tonight, which was a resolution accepting a $1,500 donation. This was from Find Fair that donated the money. It was a monetary contribution to the city, and they had specified that the money be used by the Long Branch Police Department for, in response to active emergencies. So thanks from all of us, I know the Director and the whole administration, to Find Fair for their, their generosity with that. And, yes, so this is, the, the way we work, the president, the council presidency, is that we each, each of the council members takes a turn for a year, other than Councilwoman Selly, who has graciously agreed to be the Vice President for everybody as they take their presidencies. Vice President Selly is the, with the person with the most experience and most knowledgeable about so many of the intricacies of this, and we all relied on her tremendously as we went through our term. So, yes, this is my last, this meeting for, for our first administration. We will rotate again, and we will all take turns for our next administration that starts July 1, and we hope to see you at all of the meetings next year and bring, you know, bring folks, and we'll get the vibrancy of our town going in, in great fashion. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, and be safe, and enjoy the Fourth. With that, I would now need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Well, we made it through four years.